Good morning. Welcome to the September 27th Placer County Planning Commission meeting. Will you please stand and join me in the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to the nation which governs us with its universal sovereignty.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Sue.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Mr. Hersog.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Rokuchi. Mr. Seveson. Mr. Moss.
Finally here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Report from Planning Director George is standing in for EJ. All dressed up.
Yeah, I'm dressing the best. So, good morning. My name is George Rizoska. I'm a Principal Planner in charge of current planning. And I am standing in for EJ Avaldi, who couldn't be here today. So, we have a few things today. One is, we have some new employees. One is Eric Griffin, an Assistant Engineer with Engineering and Surveying. He has a degree in Civil Engineering from Sac State. He's worked in precast concrete for two and a half years, and with the United States Army Corps of Engineers for about two and a half years before coming to work for the county. Is Eric here? Just wave. Okay. Also, we have some, two Civic Spark Fellows. One is Jessica McHale, which I don't think, I think she was in a meeting today. Is serving as a Civic Spark Fellow on climate and water-related issues. Has been assigned to assist with the preparation of the Sustainability Plan. She recently graduated from California, well, Cal Poly San Luis with a BS in Anthropology and Geography, and a concentration in Environmental Studies. We have Reed Miller, who is also serving as a Civic Spark Fellow. And he is working on the implementation of the Housing Strategy and Development Plan. He attended St. Mary's College for his undergraduate studies. He received a degree in both French and International Area Studies. After graduating from St. Mary's, he went to the city of New York, went to law school, and apparently majored in Public Interest Law, and took the Uniform Bar Exam in New York. And I asked him if he passed. He told me he was still waiting to hear. So, those are our new employees. At the recent board meeting, the Dry Creek West Placer Community Plan Amendment was approved 4-0. FTCRA various appeal. That is the appeal with the people who have no sewer disposal and didn't get permits for the second residential unit. That was continued. It was partly continued, and the board took action to deny the requested fence height. So, I think they wanted to give them a little bit more time to see if they could come up with a plan, which could only be tear it down, or move it, and make it a storage building, as far as I know at this point. Upcoming Planning Commission meetings, October 11th. You have the Dairy Field Appeal, which is a third-party appeal of zoning administrators' approval of a minor use permit to allow our caretaker using how to, caretaker housing unit on Timberland, wow, having a hard time this morning, I'm sorry guys. Timberland production zoned property up in Alta. And then, when EJ comes back next time, he will discuss scheduling for the remainder of the year, about what's coming up. The other thing at 10:05, we are requesting a continuance for Kemper Woods' extension of time. We continue that to 10:00 a.m. at the last meeting. Inadvertently, we noticed another item at the same time. So, what we're going to do is continue Kemper Woods, notice it appropriately, and then come back.
We'll have to take some action.
You will have to take action. Did you have any questions? No? Good.
Thank you, George.
You bet.
Welcome to the new employees. Very thankful you're here. Very busy plate here at the Planning Department. All hands on deck, right? I will, just for the commission and those audience, I did attend the supervisor's meeting last Tuesday, and heard a very fine, again, report from Jennifer and Shauna on the housing element. And one thing that I just wanted the commission to know is that it was this informational item, and supervisors didn't take action on it. But they're moving in that direction. On the 9th, they are going to begin in October. And at that time, Shauna will be looking for some direction from the board as to how to kind of specifically start to zero in on what ultimately some of the policies would be. So, that's an important meeting for the board to really clarify their position. I know that the In-Lu-fee has been a pretty hot subject, and that is one that they're going to be looking at the board to make a decision how they approach that. Hopefully, I presented that well, Shauna? Okay, go for it.
Shauna Purvines, Community Development Agency. On the 9th, we'll actually be discussing really just the Western Fee, and then we'll also be up in Tahoe on the 23rd, talking more about the Eastern Fee. So, we kind of wanted to give both areas an opportunity to weigh in.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'd forgotten that we're breaking the county up, which certainly makes sense, given three different elements of those areas. Okay. Now, we will move on, as George was just saying, to our first item. Oops, excuse me. I always jump over public comments. Sorry, it's not intentional. I'm not trying to cut you folks off. It's not on the, it's not an item on the agenda. I don't want to talk about it. The public comment, and again, before, we have also, the, as I usually say, you have three minutes to talk about any subject that's not early on our agenda. And I would appreciate it, we do have a timer that would hold you to three minutes. Once yellow comes on, you have one minute to wrap up. Red comes on, you're done. Anyone want to make a public comment, not related to our agenda? Once anybody jumps up, so we can move on to the consent agenda. We only have one item on that, so we're going to ask the commission to measure on it. I think it's the notes from our last meeting.
A motion to approve the consent agenda?
The motion and a second. And here's the stat, so we should have a roll call on that.
I have a first by Mr. Haugie, and a second by Mr. Moss. Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Seveson. Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, onto our first item. And again, as George said, we're going to hunt this one down the road. And so, does Nick or County Council need to say anything, or do we just take the action?
Need a motion to continue it, if that's the commission's election.
Do you have a eight and ten specific to continue that, too? Since, since we're going to continue, continue it, renotice it, for some flexibility, we would recommend it. Our, our. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we continue item one, with the time and date.
I'll second that.
We've got two seconds.
Oh.
I think.
Go ahead.
I think Nathan needs just one second, so Jeff and Nathan.
I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Hersog. So, Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Hersog.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Rokuchi.
Yes.
Mr. Seveson. Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, our 10:05 item, Placer.
Before you move on to that.
Whoops.
Everything in here is brand-new.
Yes.
Except your mic, which needs to be longer, because they don't pick up as well as they used to.
So, we need to get closer to you.
You guys need to lean in a little bit.
Shauna was really clear.
So, George, what do you say over there? What was that? Yeah, exactly. So, it's like you have to lean in.
Okay. All right. I said this at the last meeting, and I will say it again, and I talked to the technician. We are still having some challenges with our new video and audio system, so bear with us, we'll get there. It's the subjects. Yes? It's the subjects that are the problem. Yeah. I guess you could say that. Okay. Again, back to our 10:05 item. Boy, I think you can hear me now. Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. Nick?
Good morning. Nick Trifero with the Planning Services Division. So, the item I have for you today is the Placer Vineyards Property 15, Small Lot Tentative Map. I just wanted to start by giving you a brief overview of the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. The specific plan area is located in the southwest corner of Placer County, near the city of Roseville, and is located in the Dry Creek Community Plan Area. It covers a total of 5,230 acres, includes construction, ultimate construction of 14,132 residential dwelling units. Will also include commercial, retail, office, professional land uses, public facility, open space parks, and schools. The specific plan was included back in 2007, and ER was adopted at the same time. Since then, it was amended in 2012 and 2015, and a mitigation monitoring reporting program was also approved. So, a number of master plans were approved since 2007. You see on the screen Sewer Master Plan, Public Facilities Financing Plan, Development So, in June of 2017, the Planning Commission approved the first development phase in large lot maps. This is a 1,535-acre portion of the specific plan area. You can see that highlighted in green on the map on the screen. This included properties 1A, 3, a portion of 4B, 7, 12B, 15, and a portion of 19. So, with this development phase, Development Phase Phasing Plan was approved, which addressed backbone infrastructure needed to serve all the properties. Included addressing secondary roadways, a water sewer, drainage infrastructure, as well as neighborhood parks, Class 1 bike paths, and multi-purpose trails that would serve individual properties. This visual depicts the preliminary community layout for the properties within the central portion of the development phase. So, currently, all applicants have been moving forward with their small lot maps. Property 4B, 7, 12B, and 19 have been approved by your Planning Commission, and properties 1A and 3 are in county staff review. So, what we have for you today is the Property 15, a small lot map. Covers a total of 202 acres. The map is divided into 767 lots, and includes 70 low-density residential lots, 661 medium-density and 159 high-density lots, or high, I'm sorry, high-density residential units on two lots. There's also 38 dwelling units and a commercial mixed-use lot. So, the applicants also request an approval of a residential density bonus to increase the total number of medium-density residential units by 22 units, and a number of high-density residential units by nine. So, that would result in the 928 total units. So, a total of 897 units were originally allocated under the specific plan. So, to be eligible for this density bonus, nine additional very-low-income units will be provided for a total of 45 very-low-income units. So, rather than the 10% normally required, it's 11% that's being provided, for a total of 99 units.
There's a question related to that, since affordable housing is a pretty hot subject. It's because they're doing it at a low, very low end, that they get an extra credit, sort of?
Right. So, they're, rather than the 36, they're providing 45 units of, on the very low end. So, this density bonus is allowed per the Placer County Zoning Ordinance, Section 17.54120, and California Government Code, Section 65915. So, here's the vicinity map to show you the property where it's located. Zoning is Placer Vineyard Specific Plan. And the property is located about a half-mile south of Baseline Road. Palade Road is to the west, and the Placer County, Sacramento County line is furthered to the south. This is the detailed land use diagram. So, it shows the eight residential villages in this area, the total low-density residential, medium-density residential, and high-density residential lots that I mentioned earlier, and the commercial mixed-use lot. And as well as other amenities, there's eight open-space lots, which form a corridor through the center of the property. You could see in green on the map. And then also, one neighborhood park adjacent to this open-space corridor. So, there's a number of onsite improvements that are required for the development. It's, the development's proposed in three phases. Phase one, which you could see in blue, is kind of the central portion of the map, includes constructing road segments for Palade Road, 16th Street, 17th Street, South Town Center Drive, and G Streets. Phase two is in green, it covers the northern portion. That includes constructing segments of 16th, 17th, and Town Center Drive. And then lastly, phase three is the southern portion, which covers the dire lane area. And also, there's storm drainage improvements onsite, in the open-space area, and as well as potable water, sewer, and dry utilities. So, off-site improvements include the construction of the two major access roads, which come off of Baseline. Will be coming through from Palade Road, and then 14th Street, further to the east. Water connection would be from existing Calam Services water supply line at Willer-Gun Baseline, which you could see in blue on the map. Sewer would be a connection to the county's Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. That's in purple. And then, lastly, storm, off-site storm drainage is included in Property 19, to the west. So, a comprehensive environmental review process was prepared for the entire specific plan area. For Property 15, a subsequent conformity review was performed, and this included an environmental checklist and policy consistency review. As allowed by SEQA, the streamlined review allows the county to rely on past environmental documentation. If the project is determined to be consistent with the specific plan, and no changes have occurred since ER's adoption. As I mentioned earlier, Property 15 is proposing a density bonus. This is a change since the adoption of ER. However, this was reviewed by staff in the environmental checklist, which is included as an attachment to your staff report. In this checklist, staff did determine that this increase in units is a minimal change, and no environmental impacts were identified. Staff also prepared a policy consistency review, and this was determined that the project is consistent with existing specific plan policies. That's also included as an attachment. Property 15 was presented to the West Placer MAC on March 14th of this year as an informational item, and then as an action item on September 12th. At that meeting, concerns were expressed regarding the density bonus, and the potential for precedent setting across the entire plan for the density bonuses. Additional concerns, including maintaining the special planning area as a residential area, were expressed, as well as concerns regarding the lack of proposed industrial uses in the plan area. At that meeting, the MAC unanimously approved the motion to recommend that the Planning Commission approve the project by a vote of four to zero, with one member being absent. So, we've received a few comments, public comments. The first comment we received, we, from Mr. Bruce Greco, who's a residence, resident in the special planning area. A copy has been provided to the Planning Commission. Mr. Greco had concerns regarding meeting the general plan park standard with the additional units requested with the density bonus. Staff response to this comment is that there's, approval of the density bonus is not a violation of the general plan policy. Overall, the first development phase is within acceptable general plan park standard. Just a quick breakdown, there would be a density bonus would be approved. This density bonus, along with approved 12B requests, the total population as a result of those two increases is 130.5 persons, so I guess you could round it off to 131. This is only a zero, a .004% increase in projected population over the specific plan area. The total population would be 32,814. So, it can be considered minimal increase. Based on the general plan park standard, which is five acres per 1,000 residents, park acreage under this bonus would increase only slightly, up to a total of .65 acres, and that's including Property 12B, which was already approved. This, again, is a very minimal increase to the overall park acreage requirements. A total of 159 acres of parks will be provided with the specific plan for the entire area. Since the specific plan is going to be built out over a 20-year period, there will be land use adjustments along the way, which can be made throughout that period of time. Staff is tracking, tracking adjustments at both the small-out level and specific plan amendment level, as well as the approved phasing plan adjustments, which spell out the timing and triggers for infrastructure improvements at the plan-wide level. With each density bonus approval, we have a dated phasing plan, factors of condition number two in your attachment that addresses that, and reflects the additional units to ensure that necessary infrastructure is included with this development and all future developments that would include parks. If you have any further questions on this matter, we have Jennifer Byas today with Planning Service Division, is available to answer this. So, going on to other comments we received, we received comments from Mr. Ken Larson. Mr. Larson questioned affordable units required in the property. Overall, the property is providing, as I mentioned earlier, 11% affordable housing, which is above the 10% requirement. The 45 units just accounts for the very-low units, which is 5%. Also, Mr. Larson questioned the concentration of the units on the property. Although they are concentrated in one area, at the plan-wide level, affordable units are located throughout in many different areas. Our last comment was received from PG&E advising that they have overhead transmission lines in the property. All of these lines are actually located within the open-space corridor on the map. So, and just so you know, all these comments we received in the last couple of days, that was actually after the staff report went out. So, with that, happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Nick.
Sure.
Oh, yeah. If you don't mind, just, yes, the commission has had a chance to review those three letters that came in. Consider them. On, as it relates to Mr. Greco's comments, I heard your position. I take it County Council is supporting that position, the response.
What position are you referring to? There's been a few letters.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I'm clear in saying.
Well, it was related to, I guess, I think, distribution housing. I mean, Nick, can you kind of summarize it real quick, what your position is? I just want to make sure that County Council would.
Yes, on the, on the park issue, that, yeah, those calculations are based on a specific plan level, not a project, as long as the higher-specific plan area has been.
Any other questions?
Another just quick question. Noticed in the report, the water is being supplied by Calam. They said they have sufficient water. Do you know if that's groundwater or pumped out, pumped out of the ground type water? Surface water or groundwater? Because I think we should be concerned about the aquifers being drawn down. I mean, Calam, if they put a bigger well in, I guess they can supply as much water as anybody needs, but I'm kind of curious about.
Nick, I can answer that question. There was a water supply assessment done by Calam, which basically Calam just references PCWA's regional water, water plan. So, it's surface. At this point, until they get, PCWA gets their regional plan amended to add some kind of groundwater wells, it's our understanding it will all be surface water.
Doesn't the state, didn't the state come down last year with, you can only pump so much out of the ground, without some kind of?
Right. And that there's no groundwater wells anywhere proposed at, to date, in Placer Vineyard's area. They could always come back and propose to change that, but with these maps, everything's being surface. I would also be looking to Mike Smith, he was here today.
Jeff?
The park calculations work based on the whole specific plan, as opposed to just one phase of it. If a majority of the other parcels being developed in the future come in and seek the density bonus also, are we still in compliance with the required amount of park?
So, let, let me just toss, kind of walk you through a little bit on the density bonus, and how infrastructure works for vineyards. As you guys know, we approved a phasing plan for the development back in 2007. Included in that phasing plan in these properties that we're looking at maps on right now, there was a 58-acre neighborhood park requirement, and those parks are all within the mapped area in the phase. So, they're not all divided equally, but generally, the 58 acres serve for the neighborhood park requirements. With this small lot map, for example, Lot B is only 3.5 acres, right? But we don't only rely on Lot B as being available to serve the population, we look at all of the parks that we would anticipate coming in with this development phase. They also are providing trails that connect to the regional system. Do you mind turning to that map that we put in here? It's the map there, the exhibit that I'm going to kind of walk through. It's hard to see.
The trails? You want to see the park?
The phasing. Okay. So, this is the actual document out of the phasing plan. It is a little hard to see, but shown in there are the green, the dash lines, if you recall, are all the properties included in the first phase of development. And the green areas are the parks, and the two blue large areas are the regional parks. So, the neighborhood parks, which are the 58 acres we're referring to, will all be developed with the first phase. That'll be mostly project development. When the neighborhoods develop, the developers develop those parks. There's also an equalization fee to help, right? When you don't have a big park on your property, you're going to pay into a fee program to help the other developers, the equalization fee, what I would kind of describe that fee as. They're all going to be building Class 1 trails, and also trails to connect all these parks. There's also, again, our regional parks will be developed through the fee program. The Phase 1 development does include access to those regional parks. So, when enough fees have been collected, those areas could be developed. In addition to the onsite parks and regional parks, the overall park program also includes an In-Lu-fee for additional parks. So, each unit coming in will pay around $4,500 to $6,000, and that is currently an estimate, because we don't have all the fee program established for parks in this area. All of the parks will be included in the Community Service District, as well as Communities Facilities District for services and park maintenance. All of the units will participate in those programs. As these, as the Phase 1 develops, we're already seeing, right, as we go from a specific plan to a large lot map, to a small lot map, slivers of properties that come in, and will the units be achieved? Will they have to lose a few units? So, for example, on Property 7, we actually have approved some additional park area that wasn't anticipated with the original plan, but when you started, engineers started mapping it out, there was additional acreage, and they said it's adjacent to the park, we'll include that. So, it's kind of, you have to look at it cumulatively total. County is tracking this all through our phasing plan. I think, as Nick mentioned, with these density bonuses, or any kind of amendments that might come in that would add additional units, we're asking them to provide us a tracking method through our phasing plan. And the phasing plan, remember, set the triggers of when things had to be built. So, if you're adding additional 50 units in, those units will count towards all the triggers of, now you have to provide a park, now you have to provide the roadways, now you need to provide all the requirements that we outlined in our phasing plan. So, again, part, also talking about what, what qualifies you for a density bonus, and why would we consider something like this? consider something like this? Again, that 5% is restricted of very low income affordables, and that'll be restricted through an agreement before we even approve a small lot map on this project. And that is really achieving a major affordable housing goal for the policy, which is getting actual affordable units constructed. That has been a big incentive in the county, as you've heard Shawna talk multiple times here for any questions, but that's really getting at why would we consider a bonus? And I think Nick mentioned this also, is it's really a minimal bonus. They're asking for about a 3% increase in units, where really, they could come in and ask for 20%. Once you get into those thresholds under state law and our zoning ordinance of providing that 5% very low income, you're entitled to increase your units by 20%. They're actually only asking for a 3%. We believe that's reasonable. And the other part of the density bonus law that I wanted to mention is the law, the state law, it doesn't allow jurisdictions to impose additional requirements to qualify for these density bonuses. So what does that mean? That means if we said, hey, you want these additional units, now you have to amend the specific plan, now you have to do a development agreement, that would be imposing additional requirements on this to qualify for a density bonus, and actually, state law prohibits those kind of requirements. They're to be considered with the existing entitlement, and in this case, it's an entitlement for the tenant. So looking at the overall kind of approach to what we've been doing, really complies with the state law, and then again, we did look at all of these units in addition for our CQ requirement, and we still came to, through our checklist and our policy consistency table, that we're still meeting our requirements of that section that Nick mentioned, 15183. We're still within the thresholds of what the original environmental document for impacts and mitigations out there. And I think also, to answer your question of do we foresee there being everybody coming in and asking for a density bonus? So far, I mean, we have this map, we have property 1A and property 3 in the first phase, 12B and 15 are the first ones to come in and ask for these density bonuses. I believe we also have some consideration on 1A that we'll be talking about when that one's before you. But I don't think that everybody's going to come in and ask, you know, the people that have been working on this and ask for density bonuses, but they can. I mean, they're entitled to, but the part of it is the incentive that we're getting of additional affordable on-the-ground-built units is something to consider with each density bonus, or whatever qualifies that project for a density bonus.
Although also, what I understand correctly, what you said is that the ratio of park acreage to the number of units does not apply to any additional units added by the density bonus because state law prohibits.
I don't know if we would actually characterize it that way. We would say they have to meet our specific plan policy standards, and for park acreages, they do have to meet the general plan standard. We're just saying that with these bonus units that we have created through 12B and 15, we are still within our park requirement. So that's kind of on the calculate, it's not on a map-by-map calculation, it's on the phasing plan calculation of park.
Any other questions? Maybe a similar question. Notice that in the specific plan, there was a religious, seven acres of religious set aside, and apparently, a decision was made, and on the surface, it sounds logical that there's a lot of zoning opportunities within this specific plan for religious facility to go into. And so I guess, in this case, it was dropped from this particular project. But then, what I'm wondering, you know, once this thing gets built out and you don't have a religious area, it really kind of implies what the specific plan wanted to do, to set aside an area, kind of like kicking the can down the road, and maybe you can't find a place that can as well.
I think part of it is that, and yeah, it was changed through administrative modification a couple of years ago to remove that religious site. And the thought is that a lot of the zoning allows for religious uses anyway, so there really doesn't need to be a specific designation for religious lots. So that was, I think, the intent. And Jennifer, jump in if you have any thoughts on it.
Yeah, that's correct, Nick, in that when the plan was developed, they did have these religious site designations for house of worship. And then, if you recall, we came back and our zoning ordinance changed to allow houses of worship really in any residential zone. So any of these properties could come forward with the religious use after they're mapped with the LDR, HDR, MDRs, come back and say, we want to do a house of worship here, and we would have to consider that at the time.
Yeah, I didn't hear that real well, but.
I feel the same about yours. Okay, sorry. Okay, is that better? Okay. So as Nick was stating, that when their plan was originally approved, we did have the religious site designations. After 2008 approval, the county changed their zoning ordinance to allow houses of worship in any residential zone. So we would consider any of the LDR, HDR, MDR sites available for any kind of religious use. So if somebody wanted to come back in and develop a church on a HDR site, they would have to come in and propose that.
I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is if, when the specific plan is done, it's important enough to identify religious sites or religious purposes. And I can see where, you know, there's a lot of zoning that these can occur in, so how's the county going to, I guess, enforce the idea that was advanced in the specific plan, have religious sites within this area?
Well, I think kind of our general position again is they can be in any of these areas, that keeping a property specifically for religious, we still have religious sites within the phase-one and within the rest of the specific plans, so they still are there, but somebody can come back in and propose a house of worship on any residential zone, and we would consider that, even if it wasn't a religious site.
Okay, so there really is no?
I don't think the county's intent was never to insist that a religious facility be placed on, they were just making room for it.
George, you need to get a little closer to the mic.
How about now?
Okay.
Really. It was never our intent to absolutely say, to be consistent with the plan, that you have to have a religious site on the piece of property zone that way. That was not the intent. It was, the intent was, I can go into the whole history of it, but I'm not going to, but the intent was to make sure that there was space specifically for religious opportunities and churches and that sort of synagogue. But the thought is, as we move forward, is that, like Jen was saying, there's plenty of space for all of these, and there's really not necessarily a need to have something specifically called out, because the opportunity to have those facilities is exactly the same.
Okay, I think I'm following, I guess, some of the previous ones we approved and religious sites.
That, I don't know if it was changed throughout the entire plan.
So far, all of the maps, the only map that had a religious site is property seven, and it was actually pretty small, it was about two acres?
So then, you know, given the administrative change, I guess I could come back and want to do something else with that property.
Administrative change for, oh, excuse me, I think I understand your question. The administrative change that Nick was referring to in the staff report only applied to changing it for property 15. So it wasn't a plan-wide, the administrative modification that went from the religious site that was on property 15 to MDR here was only for property 15.
So the other one is still in force?
Yes, the other ones are still available.
All right, I just wanted clarification. Another thing I have is, and if we can get a map of the lots in the subdivision of?
Maybe that first one was better, right?
Well, I have, you know, I wanted one with more detail.
I think that one, it's kind of hard to see that one.
Okay, well, it would be kind of hard to describe, but on the western edge of the proposed subdivision, there's a, there's kind of a road that goes through the middle of it, and on the very western edge, there's a, several parcels that end in a cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac, I mean, these are several parcels, many more than eight normally you consider for two entries, but for some reason, there's a cul-de-sac right next to the main road, and I'm wondering why that road is not opened up, the cul-de-sac is not opened up.
This is off of Palladium Road, the western, the road on the west-hand side.
You're going to have to.
This is Palladium Road on the western portion you're referring to?
Yes. Or maybe fill one.
Try to move this closer to me. So originally, the applicant had proposed the cul-de-sac to be in the other direction, but we had some concerns about the roundabout that is on Palladium and that encroachment onto South Town Center Drive, so we felt it was a better design to flip that cul-de-sac so that the access was off G Street. There's no requirement to have a through connection unless there's a reason like for fire, if it's too long, and a lot of times, then they'll have an emergency access, but we didn't feel like there was any need to require a through connection at that point. In fact, we didn't want a connection onto South Town Center Drive because of the location with the roundabout.
I guess I'm not really following, because it seems like on this road, you know, people can drive all the way down the road, and they'll be looking at, what, a center drive? At the roundabout.
South Town Center.
But, you know, I guess logically, I'd wonder, well, why don't you just open it up?
Because there were some traffic concerns that we had about the location of that encroachment and how close it was to the proposed roundabout to the west of it. We didn't want to have an encroachment there. So that's why we didn't want that to be a connection. So it was some, it was traffic circulation concern.
Well, I'm way over here. Richard, if you could get a little closer to the mic. Pass this over to, same place.
Yeah, we're talking about the same spot. We did not want to put a connection onto South Town Center Drive because of the location of that encroachment in relation to the roundabout that's to the west of it, and how people circulate through the roundabout onto South Town Center Drive and that encroachment that you're asking for.
Okay, so that's a future roundabout?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so in the future, we didn't think that that would be a good circulation to have that encroachment there, so we had to move it over to the other road on the east, south side.
Okay. Well, that's a future map. This map makes you wonder, but you show the roundabout, then that's.
Yeah.
Anything else, Richard? Any other questions for Nick or Matt? Nick, we'll give the applicant an opportunity if they would like to add anything.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Mike Smith. I'm with McCann-Somps. We're the planners and engineers for Palladium Greens LLC, the owner of the property. Also representing McCann-Somps is Eric Crowe, one of our planners, and the owner representative Tony Gallus is also here if there are questions as we go along. Let's see. I think our initial response was that we've worked with staff on a number of issues such as the cul-de-sac, such as the affordable housing. We're in agreement with the proposed conditions of approval, and we would like to request your approval of the map and the resolutions before you today. There are a couple of things I did want to touch on with regards to water. Cal-Am is the retailer in this specific area. PCWA is the wholesale provider, they sell water to Cal-Am. PCWA's water is all surface water, so in effect, Cal-Am will be retailing the surface water to the residents within Placer Vineyards. With regards to the density bonus, the original, the current entitlement for the property consists of 900 units, a combination of MDR, LDR, HDR, and CMU. The affordable obligation from the development agreement is 10% of that total number, or 90 units, and it's broken down into low, moderate, and very low categories with percentages assigned to each of those. I believe it's 2% moderate, 4% low, 4% very low. We, in working with Shawna, we came up with a request for a density bonus, four additional units based on what the zoning ordinance allows, and for providing the additional 1% of very low, you could request up to 20% of the total number of units within the project. So for the same nine units, you could request another 180 additional units within the property. We're requesting 31, and that's the small percentage that Jennifer is referring to, which consisted of 22 MDR and nine HDR. So we felt very comfortable with that, and it was very similar in nature to the density bonus request made by property 23, where they requested 23 units and potentially, they could have requested up to 80. So I think, we think we have a good project, we think we provide some additional very low affordable units, which would be a benefit to the county and to the project. I think that was the main thing I wanted to clarify, and I think, as Jennifer mentioned, there will be monitoring the park situation as the property builds out. And of the first four approved small lot maps, as Jennifer noted, there is an increase in acreage on one of the parks and one of the properties of about .7 acres. That .7 acres, coincidentally enough, is greater than the .65 acres that would be required by the density bonuses that have been granted for 12B, and we hope to have granted for property 15. So we think things will move over time, there will be changes requested, and with staff's monitoring, I think we will preserve the requirements from the GPA. We have no intent to not meet the requirements of the GPA in terms of providing park space, and we'll continue to work with staff to do that. I think that's all I really had, unless there were questions that the commissioners had that we could try to help to address, and if there are public comments where we need to respond to those comments, we'd like to be able to come back at the end of the hearing if there are any.
Questions for the applicant? Very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it for public comment, and I would appreciate it if you would keep your comments to three minutes, so you can very succinctly outline what you'd like to address the commission on. And again, that we will have a timer, and as long as it's green, good, and then yellow is one-minute wrap-up, red is end of your three minutes. So would appreciate it if you would adhere to that, so I'm going to open it for public comment now, and if anyone would like to, please step forward and say your name.
Hi, I'm Bruce Greco. I submitted one of the comments in regard to this project. The Placer Vineyards property owners have officially come to the Board of Supervisors many times over the last 20 years that I've been following this project, and they've asked for additional residential units many, many times, and they have been told every time, no. So this request has been asked and answered of the Board of Supervisors over and over again. I believe it's a fact that today's request for the additional housing units does put the Placer Vineyard specific plan in violation of the Placer County general plan, that they now are under that requirement of five acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. The county just kept evading your question of them over and over again, or are we under that five acres? or are we under that five acres? And instead, they say they're going to track stuff and somehow make it up down the road, which is completely unjust to the other property owners. Why should they have to do less housing units or put in more park acreage to make up this difference? You have to understand that this development is like around 24 different property owners. And when you look at the map of what's occurring on each of their properties, some properties are virtually all developed with housing and commercial. Other properties, a half, two, a third is water storage for stormwater runoff. Naturally, everyone would have wanted their property to be completely houses and commercial development, and their neighbors to have the parks, to have the stormwater storage and stuff like that. But years ago, prior to the 2007 approval, they made negotiations and compensation was paid for the plan to be put forth to the Board of Supervisors as it was and as it was approved. For them to make any changes in regard to park acreage or the stormwater drainage capacity of their property or of the population of their property is unfair to the other owners. This adding population to this 15 is going to increase traffic. This is isolated, completely surrounded by other property owners in the Placer Vineyard specific plan. Are any other roads going to have increased volumes that pushes them over the threshold so that they get $3 million in additional profit from what you do today? Meanwhile, property 17, somewhere else, they need to put in an extra traffic lane. They lose $4 million worth of property value because that has to go towards wider roads to feed their increased population. All this stuff was settled before 2007. They came up with their agreement of what they were going to do, the number of people on each landlot, whether they were going to have water storage for, you know, the high-density development above them, upstream, or what have you. You can't allow this type of change to occur. Can I say one more thing about the religious facilities? By eliminating designated religious facilities, no one ever brings this forth. By eliminating facilities that are designated for religious facility purposes, the Board of Supervisors specifically required that in the plan. Their objective was to have this reserved for religious facilities. The reality is, if you don't reserve it, then you allow either or, housing or religious. The value for housing is so much greater, it completely prices it out of being accessible by religious organizations. If it's reserved, then different religious organizations bid on it and someone gets it in their religious organization. If it can be have houses on it instead, there will be absolutely no religious facilities in this 5,000-acre development because no religious organization is going to be able to buy that land that could also be developed for homes because the profit is in the homes, not for selling it to a religious facility that has a limited budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else who would like to get up and comment on this? Close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. I guess I could ask. In Mr. Greco's last, his comment, are there anything new that could be considered versus what he has given us right now? You're asking, what are these?
Again, I think Mr. Greco, you know, is raising questions about the density bonus. And is there a requirement or are we out of compliance with our general plan or specific plan standards for parks? And staff's position is no, that the overhaul phase will achieve the necessary general plan, specific plan, park standard. You know, I definitely am hearing the religious site comments, and we're taking that in and noting.
That does seem like a valid concern.
I could just mention one thing. The religious designation, that was actually taken previously. And the other thing I just wanted to mention with respect to the park calculation, Jen did mention it before, but state law prevents counties from putting other requirements on a project that encourage the density bonus. Since that density bonus encourages affordable housing. That's something to kind of be considered as well. And also, the additional units that are provided with the density bonus, they would still be subject to the impact of traffic.
I guess. Yeah, when Mr. Greco was talking about the religious, there was some sense in what he was saying there. And this was an administrative fusion that was reached as part of this analysis. And so as far as being considered by the commission, it was discussed in the staff report. So are we saying that can't be discussed or considered here, an issue?
It can be discussed as part of the larger discussion about the map, but the actual decision over the religious designation is something that we're deciding before the board today.
I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
The actual decision over changing the religious designation, residential and/or religion, that decision was already made, so that decision is not before the commission today. But this, I guess, the decision before the commission is the map itself. You can think of all of those factors as you're deciding on the map. Does that answer?
I think I'm almost following. Maybe not totally.
Ready to make a motion? Chairman is ready?
The only thing, I just wrap up kind of what you're saying. And Jennifer, I was glad to hear that you're saying you're reviewing this issue on the religious sites and designation versus not designating. And I think, maybe I'm speaking for myself and maybe Richard, but I think that really, really does need to be reviewed because that just seems kind of out of balance with what the market might dictate what happens to those properties.
Great, because we have some more land use changes that'll be coming before you, that will, this issue will be brought up. But I did just want to clarify, and I think Mike can clarify if I'm getting this wrong. But the decision, the administrative modification that was approved that removed the religious site from this piece and went incorporated into the adjacent MDR was done before a large lot final map. So, and those large lot final maps came before the board, excuse me, came before your commission. Is that correct? Was that admin mod done with the large lot map?
Could you come up? If you have any response to this.
I believe that the admin mod for that particular parcel occurred after the large lot map. I think, because there were, within the development phase, there were five or six properties with religious properties. Of that group of six, there have been two requests made to use the administrative modification process to change to, I think in both cases, they were to MDR. There are still four other sites, I believe, in the development phase area that retain the REL designation. So it's somewhat similar to the density bonus that it has not happened project-wide to this point. There have been a couple owners that have chosen to pursue the admin mod or the density bonus, but it's not, it's not a plan-wide request at this point. It has been at each owner's discretion. There is a process in the specific plan document that allows consideration of that kind of change, subject to review by staff and ultimately an approval by the planning director to make the change. I'm pretty sure it was after the large lot map, but I'm not positive.
As you, as you were going over that, I did look at, it is in the staff report. And the administrative modification was January 2017, and the map was June 2017. So it was before the map.
I'm getting older. I'm sorry. Did forget that.
All right. Thank you. All right, unless there's any other question. Yeah? Let's get close to the mic. Really sorry about this audio.
I would make a motion that we determine that the potential impacts of the proposed property 15 small lot vesting tentative subdivision map, which is part of the Placer Vineyard specific plan development phase, are within the scope of the analysis of the 2007 Certified Placer Vineyards Final Environmental Impact Report and subsequent addendums supported by the findings in the report.
Another slide there, just wanted to add.
You need to read it. Okay.
So one motion?
Is it one motion?
I was assuming it would be two.
All right, so we have one. Anyone a second? Okay.
I have a first by Mr. Moss and a second by Mr. Severson. Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Rokuchi? Mr. Severson? Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I can continue, I guess I'll do the second one. And I would motion that we approve the Placer Vineyard's property, property 15 small lot vesting tentative subdivision map and residential density bonus that will create 767 lots, including 70 low-density lots, 661 medium-density residential lots, including 22 density units, two high-density lots, 159 units, including nine density units on 12 acres, and one commercial mixed-use lot, 3.4 acres, with 38 dwelling units for a total of 928 units, including 5% of the affordable units for occupancy of very low-income households for a total of 11% of the total residential units to be affordable housing consistent with Placer County General Plan, the Vineyard's specific plan, Placer County Zoning Ordinance Section 17.54.120 residential density bonuses, and California Government Code Section 65915, density bonuses and other incentives. The density bonus increased to the total number of units on the property 15 from 897 to 928. In addition, the small lot vesting tentative subdivision map will create one neighborhood park, eight open-space lots, 20 landscape lots, and one religious site lot within the previously approved. Am I losing, do we change this? Okay. Then the previously approved Placer Vineyard specific plan area, all supported by the findings within the staff report.
I think we're good. Right? Are we good, Clay?
Great, great.
Yeah, he deserves extra points for all of that.
There is an error on this, on this approval recommendation.
With the religious site.
Mentions the one religious site.
That's kind of where I stopped and was trying to compare the two here. So I would make that motion minus the reference to the one religious site.
Are you good?
I guess we got it. Again, you get extra points for reading all of that. Do we have a second? Jeff and Larry again.
I have a first by Mr. Moss, a second by Mr. Severson. So Mr. Haugie?
Yes.
Mr. Hersog?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Rokuchi?
Yes.
Mr. Severson? Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure of that item. Thank you, everybody who attended that. Move on to our last item. Our supposedly 10:20. Thank you for all being very patient as we move through the agenda. The United Auburn Community, Indian Community School Project. Emily, before you get started, I just wanted to say something. I really appreciate everyone that sits up here and takes the time to review all of the information they have to for these meetings. I think people think, okay, well, they just come to a meeting and they make a decision and they leave. Well, there is a lot of pre-work that has to be done to make sure that we're making the right decisions for our community. And the compensation is beyond trivial that they get. So this is a great sacrifice personally. When you have to read a document like this, okay, this is not like reading if you're doing your job right. So I just wanted to say that I respect everyone that sits up here and takes the time out of their personal schedule to not only read all the documents thoroughly to be prepared, but also spends a lot of time with applicants and with opponents to various projects that come before this mission. So we're talking about many, many hours of personal time. So I just want to thank everybody at this table for the sacrifices they make to the public and those sacrifices. That's my stop for the day.
What office are you running for?
I'm not running for an office. I just appreciate the.
That was a good, that was a good, that was a good speech.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I mean, thank you very much. Thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I'm Emily Sitzer. I'm the planner working on the United Auburn Indian Community Tribal School Project. And we are here today to go over the draft EIR for this project. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. It encourages counties to hold public hearings on all environmental documents. It's also county policy for the Planning Commission to hold public hearings on all EIRs for projects being reviewed by the Planning Commission. This project requires a minor use permit, which generally doesn't come to the Planning Commission. But because it requires an EIR, we are bringing it to the Planning Commission. This hearing today, the purpose is to review the adequacy of the draft EIR. I'll remind everyone that it is not an opportunity to debate the merits of the project. The draft EIR was noticed to many people as part of this process. Notices were sent out to 82 property owners within 300 feet of the project, as well as anybody who commented on the notice of preparation, and the Air Pollution Control District, the Horseshoe Bar Penrin Municipal Advisory Council, state and federal agencies who's, who are reviewing this EIR, the town of Loomis, which is adjacent to the project, and to county staff. Okay, so here is a picture of the vicinity of the project. And it is located north of 80, along Taylor Road, adjacent to the town of Loomis. So this blue line is the town of Loomis border. Delaware O High School is further down Taylor Road. And there is a residential subdivision next to the project. I apologize, the site plan is difficult to see on these screens, but I have broken it into two plans here. So this slide shows the north plan, and then the next slide shows the southern portion of the site. And there are, this shows the proposed buildings here on the northern side of the project vicinity. So this is Taylor Road. There is a pond here, and then this is where the lighted ball field would go. And this is the southern portion of the project site, which is mostly undeveloped. The project description includes demolishing the existing structures on the site. It was formerly used as a bed and breakfast and an event center. It was also a previous orchard. So there is some arson, arsenic contamination in the soils. So the site will undergo remediation in coordination with the Department of Toxic Substances Control for that soil remediation. And so once those two phases happen, the project would construct the four new buildings, totaling 48,650 square feet. And they would relocate the students from the existing school on Indian Hill Road to the new school at Taylor Road. The school would also include a small ball field, two play areas, and a nature trail. And it would house up to 100 tribal students with 35 staff members. And the operating hours would be Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The project also proposes the addition of a tribal education center with six staff members, a tribal cultural center with two staff members, and some improvements to the existing onsite irrigation stock pond and pier. The EIR also analyzed an estimate, an estimate of the events that the project would. The EIR also analyzed an estimate, an estimate of the events that the project would hold onsite, and those were estimated at up to three large events per year during school hours or on weekday evenings until 8:00 p.m. for up to 200 attendees, and then six mid-size events per year from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays with up to 100 attendees, and four small events per year during school hours or on weekday evenings with up to 35 attendees. This project would require a minor use permit to allow construction of a school facility in the residential agriculture zoning district. About a year ago, last July, staff presented this project as an informational item to the Horseshoe Bar Penrin MAC, and the notice of preparation and initial study went out last October with a public comment period. So we did receive public comments on that. And then last fall, last November, we held a public scoping meeting with limited attendance. And then last month, the draft EIR was released for public comment, and that public comment period closes Monday, October 1st. I believe we've received three, and they've been from agencies so far. The initial study and notice of preparation, which went out last, go back, last October, it looked at the following resource areas, and it provided a preliminary evaluation of possible environmental impacts that could result from the development and operation of the proposed project. The initial study determined that these following environmental resource areas would result in no impact, impacts that are less than significant, or impacts that are significant with mitigation incorporated. So impacts under these resource areas were not further evaluated in the draft EIR. So this was done to focus the EIR down to as few impacts as possible. The impacts that are analyzed in the draft EIR were our impacts under the following resource areas, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, hazardous materials and hazards, noise, transportation and circulation, utilities and service systems, and cumulative Nearly all of the potential environmental impacts are less than significant, or can be reduced to a less than significant level through proposed mitigation measures. So resource areas that would be less than significant with mitigation incorporated were biological resources, cultural resources, hazards, noise, and transportation. Resources that did not require any mitigation to reach that level were air quality and greenhouse gas emissions, and utilities and service systems. This project does result in three significant and unavoidable impacts, and even with mitigation incorporated. And these transportation-related impacts are significant and unavoidable mainly because they are outside of our county's jurisdiction. The applicant or the project would be mitigating for their project's impacts within the county's jurisdiction. So impacts to intersections within the town of Loomis jurisdiction would remain significant and unavoidable because these improvements, the improvements that would be necessary to construct are only partially funded by the town's CIP fee program. And in the cumulative scenario, some of those improvements would be relying on the Village of Loomis project to construct those, and we can't guarantee that that project would go, move forward and would construct it. So the EIR considers it significant and unavoidable. The project includes three alternatives in the EIR. The first is the no project, no build alternative, which would allow the existing uses on the site to occur, no changes to that. The no ball field lighting alternative would limit the nighttime lighting, it would eliminate the nighttime lighting at the ball field, and so it would limit outdoor events to only daylight hours. So events could not happen at the ball field after dusk. And I will note that in the initial study, impacts related to aesthetics, including light and glare, were dismissed as less than significant already, but this alternative was intended to further dismiss any, any impacts. The reduced scale alternative is the third one, which would reduce the overall scale of the project from a pre-K to eighth grade elementary school to a pre-K to fifth grade elementary school, to make that building smaller. It would also omit the adult education center and the tribal cultural center facilities. California Environmental Quality Act does require that an EIR analyze a reasonable range of feasible alternatives, and that those alternatives must meet most or all project objectives while reducing the magnitude of or avoiding one or more significant environmental effects of the project. SEQA also requires that an environmentally superior alternative be identified. Generally, that environmentally superior alternative is the one that would cause the least damage to the biological and physical environment. In this case, the no project, no build alternative would result in the fewest environmental effects as compared to the proposed project and other alternatives. If the environmentally superior alternative is the no project alternative, then SEQA requires that another alternative be selected as the environmentally superior alternative. So in this case, the reduced scale alternative became that alternative because it would reduce the greater number of impacts compared to the other alternatives. So today, we're here to provide the overview of the EIR, but also to be able to collect public comments since we are in the public comment period. In addition to the opportunities to this date, there are opportunities today and moving forward for the public to comment on this project. So members of the public could comment today. They could also submit responses, written responses until October 1st, and I will get to the next slide to show how to do that. And then any commenters who do respond on the draft EIR will receive a formal response to their comments and a copy of the final EIR. And then we expect to be back before your planning commission, probably in January, for the hearing to recommend approval of the final EIR and the minor use permit. So we'll be back here with more opportunities for comment. So if members of the public would like to submit written comments on this draft EIR, please do so by October 1st, and please either mail a letter to Shirley Harrington or email us at the CEDRA ECS, and that's the Environmental Coordination Services, email address. And this is on, this project is on our Placer County planning website also with that link there, and I'm happy to answer any questions today.
Seeing none, I guess we're good for the moment.
Okay.
What we're trying to accomplish here, as Emily went over, is pretty straightforward. Again, just the presentation of the project, and at this point, we're just gathering any information from the public where they feel that there may be additional information needed in this report or some deficiency. The merits of the project, as she said, will be discussed at the next time when it comes back for approval. This is just a hearing. This is not any decision that's been made today. So I would, we certainly encourage you and welcome your comments today, but I would also encourage you to write, email, or get a letter in to the department to put up because writing is certainly, I think, puts it in a more settled form. And you have until Monday, which is a pretty short window for that, but I'm sure you can get it accomplished if you need to. But again, as I, in the public comment period, I'd ask that people keep their comments for three minutes, so if you could just focus in on what's the most important, that would be good. And so we will be using the timer. So please, as you come up, state your name for the record. So I'm going to open it up for public comment. If you would like to, please step forward. Did I scare everybody?
You scared me. You scared me. Quiet. Clay?
I guess I'll start.
Okay, good.
I'm Patty Knifer, Penrin resident, and I'm also chair of the Horseshoe Bar Penrin MAC. I'd like to comment on the MAC meeting, and then also a personal comment. At the June 2017 MAC meeting, where there was public comment and the information item on the tribal school, it's very rare that there isn't a lot of public input for and against a project, and this was one of those projects that was very well received by everyone there at, in the public meeting. The comments were all positive, 100% positive for the project. The MAC member comments were also very positive. I think we had a full MAC there.
So there was no reference to anything that they wanted to see further attention?
I think in general, the community and the MAC liked seeing this kind of a project. It used to be an event center. It was, there were events there every weekend. It was a high-traffic area, and just the quality of the project, the type of project, seemed very well received, and it would be a fabulous new addition for the Penrin area. And there were really no, no concerns expressed at that meeting. I personally would welcome a school and a, with designated events and a community cultural center there, and I would very much look forward to attending some of those, those meetings in the future. And it seems like, I just want to comment that the, there were no negative comments. So if it comes in front of the MAC again, I'm not sure if that is actually a requirement or not. I would predict that it would have a very positive outcome.
Anyone else want to get up?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Mitch Higgins, Fire Chief, Penrin Fire. And a little personal, I'm fourth generation in Penrin, so I've seen Penrin grow from vineyards, orchards, farmlands into what it is today. So I have seen a lot of personal growth in our community. When the United Indian Tribe came to us with the proposal of the project, and we've worked with them closely throughout the current stages of the project, Penrin Fire does support the project, and we believe that it would be a good fit for our community. So Penrin Fire does support the project.
So from your perspective, there's no deficiencies in the report draft?
No. The only thing I, I would request that the project is not derated from what their current submitted was.
All right, then I will close the public comment for everyone and bring it back to the commission. Question, regards to the report that's given to us today. Do you have a question?
Oh, no. It's encouraging to see that something can come through, and it's controversial, and find that they made their way through the grass of government as we know it today, and we have so much support and goodwill.
Great. Very good. All right, I guess if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting.
What do I do now with Ed?
Yes, that's right. Thank you, everybody, for attending.